Huh?
Which one was it?
No, right now, he wasn't recording. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Your honor, all right, thank you. All right, so six oh one, we will call to order. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Nope.
Any public comment? We have nobody here.
Are we gonna read that email that we got? No.
As public comment?
Yeah.
They'd have to make that.
They could if they wanted to.
Okay.
I can make a public comment around, uh, this is Kate, Sonia, talking as a parent, uh, mostly. I'm just curious about, because I know there was an email circulating around, uh, the school schedule and the loss of those two days that we had because of the water issue, and I just wanted to, um, know if there was any consideration around, um, making up those days in another place rather than tacking them on to the end of the school year.
Yeah, if you want to, yeah.
Uh, we, uh, we got the email, uh, I've talked to the chair, and we will address it in December. We, we didn't want to address an issue that impacts more than just, uh, the few people who sent the email without letting people know it would be on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? Just gonna choose it. Uh, AP warrant should be, is that what was on?
No, they're not here.
No way AP warrant, sent out by?
We will send them digitally.
Okay. All right, next is approval of the October sixth, twenty twenty five LCS School Committee Regular Board Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the ten six twenty five.
I'll second.
Here's the main emotion, the A B accepted, all in favor of approving the ten six twenty five School Committee Meeting Minutes. All five in favor.
Question, I was just curious if there is public discussion at a meeting, there's no mention of it in the minutes. Is that right?
Um, I haven't been. In fact, I've tried really hard not to capture a sort of a, a running log for a couple of reasons. One, uh, what it creates is a situation where somebody comes back the next meeting, goes, I didn't really say that. What I meant was, right? So that, and then the second is, we have a, a, a tape of what's been on them, and it's posted with the minutes, so.
Okay, yeah, I didn't want, I wasn't worried about specific comments, but just a general topic that might have come up.
Yeah.
At public discussion be recorded.
Yeah.
All right. Finance updates.
Yeah, so, um, it's a little complicated this time because Steph, um, one found, uh, Steph and Monica, who's now doing payroll, have found, uh, we have been, uh, recording our, our health insurance payments in the wrong lines, so they're working hard to clean them up. So there's a ton of lines in here with that note in it. And I honestly, I can't tell you where it's gonna be, uh, until next month as they clean it up. But starting with the top one, um, we have expended, uh,
Which page is this?
So, so first one, yeah, the overview. So we've expended about twenty-six percent of our budget, received about thirty-six percent of our revenues. Uh, what we should have expended, uh, based just on the payroll we paid out is nineteen, um, but if we figure out what the, um, so that's just based on the school year payroll. If we figure out what it's, is, uh, spreading out summer accrual over the year, uh, it should, we should have spent about thirty-five percent. So that twenty-six percent sits between those two, and that's, uh, that's where we want to be. We, we couldn't spend as little as nineteen, um, and if we were much over, say thirty-three or something, that would be a cause for concern, but uh, we're in the, in the right ballpark for expenditures between nineteen and thirty-five. Then, um, the detail is what I was referring to at the beginning, a lot of notes in the column, Steph has done a really nice job. Um, but a number of these, uh, lines are, are quite out of, out of, uh, out of place, you know, you look at that first one, grade three, eight insurance, it seems like we made money on the insurance line. Uh, so, we are correcting, uh, those issues, and for those of you who have some history with us, uh, I think you'll understand why some of these have been done, uh, or how it could have been done incorrectly, but we've corrected that, uh, that problem internally, and I think we'll see it.
Do you mean it just goes to a different line? Cause so.
It's, it's shown up in a different line item. So she's written, should be SB, this is what the number should be, um, based on her calculations and, but this is a spit out of actually what we, what we paid out of these lines already, so. I don't think you're gonna make sense of it right now.
Well, not, we never had anything that broke it out by like grades this granular before, so that's the reason why there's not really anything to necessarily compare it to, because it didn't exist prior to this.
Right, and that would, that'll, that, that was certainly true when you guys were trying to do your, your budget for the town, you had a whole different setup.
Yeah.
Lines you were using versus these are the school codes that Steph believes we should be using. So there's been a lot of movement between those two years. When we get started in the spring this year, you'll see the same lines in our budget, uh, projected budget or asked for budget as we're seeing here. That doesn't explain the health insurance one. That was a mistake made in the office, so.
Well, I found the notes really helpful. I love having that column explaining issues, so.
Yeah. And you know, you get, you also have to look at the, the total, because, you know, it's two hundred percent of a hundred dollar line is not a lot of money, right? Starting next month, uh, Steph's traveling right now, um, starting next month, she'll be here for our, uh, at least through this section of the, the board agenda, so we can be a little more, uh, we can ask a little more hard-hitting questions perhaps.
And we can always reach out anyway, like if you got.
Yeah, you can, and if there's a question here I'm not sure about, you just, I'll take it away and send you the answer.
But the bottom line, dollar amount, even though it's not on the right line, is still correct.
Still in the right ballpark, absolutely.
In terms of not overspending for insurance. Or ending up.
Yeah, no, actually, I'm, I'm not sure we're overspending at all for insurance, but we don't have it in the right lines yet.
It's in it, just the wrong line. I just want to clarify for my own, it's not like it was left out of it, it was in it, just wrong line.
Right.
Okay.
Well, maybe in the right line budget, it may have been billed to the wrong line. As we make adjustments.
Inter, yes.
That makes sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's more of, it's included in there. I just want to make sure that it's.
Right.
Not surprised.
Billed is not the right line, but like attributed to the wrong, to the, to the wrong line.
Yeah. All right, any other questions or finance? Updates?
I don't have any.
All right, next possible approval to raise substitute pay for non-four-year degree substitutes?
Yeah, so last month we talked about changing, uh, the pay, and I didn't realize we had a differential for uh, substitute to have a four-year degree versus substitute to don't. So we raised the four-year degree by twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
And it's now equivalent to what's offered in the other two schools in Health District. The substitute pay for, uh, employees who don't have a four-year degree is also twenty-five dollars larger in the other two s- school districts. So I'm proposing that you consider uh, raising your substitute pay from one twenty-five to one fifty to be equivalent to the other two schools. I should have done both at once, but it was an or side on my part.
And the money is still there.
Think the money is still gonna work out, right?
Hadn't, I know, that related for both, we just didn't actually say both in the last meeting.
Any other questions or?
Need to clear that up, then, last week, I don't think that was made specific.
Cause last year's was just substitute pay, or last week, month, rather, was just.
So. I mean, I, I didn't realize that until I saw that this.
That is a point, we might just clarify both, four-year degree is at.
We could, we could make that motion right now and make sure that it's on the record that way, so the motion could.
That makes sense.
I, I didn't realize that's.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, no, I think that's a good suggestion. So you could alter this to, um, move to raise the pay for substitute teachers without a forty-year degree to one fifty per day and with a forty, four-year degree to one seventy-five.
That's.
That's what all three districts now are paying, will, will be paying, yeah.
Standard here. Elsewhere it's higher.
Yeah.
We're still below what other schools are paying.
Yeah, almost a hundred dollars, even after this raise.
In some places, yeah, it's as much as that. Some schools have, you know, they're trying to, uh, I will say Camden Rock Sports, not that much. But they, they don't have as much difficulty attracting people, so.
R C thirteen's tough.
R S U thirteen's tough. R S U, S A D forty's tough.
To S A D forty, hot.
Yeah.
If we get to that point, could we consider hiring like a permanent sub position?
Some schools have done that, um. You know, I, I don't think we're prepared, I'm certainly not prepared to figure out what the cost differential for you would be, and I, and again, it would have to be valuable enough. The people who sub do it for a couple of reasons. One, it's not every day. Right, so they pick and choose when they're gonna work, um, and then those who have access to, say, all the schools in this mid-coast region, you know, are picking and choosing, one, places they're comfortable in, and two, you know, who's paying the most, so. I think, I think we wait and see if this changes the dynamic.
Any other questions?
I think they'd be applying to be an ed tech, if someone were interested in doing that stuff.
All right.
I'll make a motion to move to raise pay for substitute teachers without four-year degrees to a hundred fifty per day and with four-year degree to one seventy-five today.
Can I get a second? You get that? You got lots of seconds on that. All right, all in favor? All five in favor? Let you catch up. All right, next we'll go on to possible approval of a public participation guide for school committee meetings so that we have something that has formalized for us to use.
So on the left-hand side of your, uh, thing is a draft of what it could look like as well as your actual policy, in case you have a question about it.
It did, I felt like there were some things in here that I didn't understand why we needed to include, and also maybe some clarity issues. I did make a draft of an alternative, I'm sorry to share it, but I've been traveling, I have one copy of a suggestion, but the, uh, like, for example, the nondiscrimination policy, is that something that we're required to print?
We're not, um, but I thought this was an opportunity to put out in public some of the things that we are required to publicly announce, and nondiscrimination is certainly one of them, um, and then some information on the back about the role of school boards, um, which, so I saw this not only as a way for us to have a clear indication to the public when they're here about what the rules of the game will be if they want to speak, um, but also a chance to educate the community.
Yeah, I mean, I think, first of all, I think it's great to have a handout, and I'm excited, and clearly I think all of us could use, so brush up on the rules, um. I don't know if it's helpful to pass this around, but my thought was like, I, I felt like there were a couple of things missing, and including like, um, for public comment that people can email us or email you or Tracy instead of coming to meetings if they're not available, if I understand correctly, and then, um, I also found kind of the list of different kinds of meetings that we have to be confusing, although maybe accurate, then it might be helpful just to say, this is how public comment works at our regular meetings, and then we have a different handout if it's like a workshop or a different explanation. In any case, I like this concept, but I've been, I have a lot, too many edits, uh, to feel like I want to approve it today.
You want to email that around to everybody and then?
Yeah. Sure.
So what should happen, just to remind us though, is you should send any comments about those edits to me or to Tracy, not to the group. So, we shouldn't have.
Have a, a email.
Have a debate about what the, the language should be online.
I, I do, I also like just something tangible for people to have, um. It definitely can be hard sometimes to kind of balance the, it's a meeting in public and not wanting public comment to get into a public debate. And so that's kind of my own ongoing balance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For you, the public, but I also know we have to have a meeting and get through our agenda, um, which is part of the reason why I think it's important for us to have very as much as we can have agendas that don't need edits or amendments to the agenda, so people know this is what will actually be discussed, so if they have something to say or to provide information about, then they can either email or make sure that they're here or online to be able to give us that public comment of whatever their thoughts are. But I'm, I don't, it always feels like there's a little bit of nuance to it too, because sometimes we have hot button issue, like the budget always seems to be a little bit more fluid of a conversation because it's the town's money, and so we do tend to have a little bit more public.
So that meeting, it depends on what meetings we're talking about, right? One of those meetings is their meeting, it's the town's meeting, right, and one is a workshop. Others are yours, right, where we're looking at the first draft, the budget, um. I'll just share this because things didn't go well, if I'm being frank with everybody here at that meeting. Um, I think there's two things that we have to hold on to regardless of what this document looks like. One is, comments are direct to the chair. And the chair is the only one who should respond, if at all, to those comments unless they want to ask somebody to speak. What we began to have was a conversation around the table based on public input, and that's
Last.
Right, last meeting, and, and so that, I think, is really a slippery slope to be on, um, for a lot of reasons that I think we've all kind of noodled around, and, and maybe the most important being, um, it puts, whether, and primarily, it's, it's Justin and I in a position to answer questions we weren't prepared to answer coming from you, right? And so believe it or not, we don't know everything off the top of our heads, and there is a whole lot of information that administrators have to be ready to speak to when they speak in a public meeting. And to, to respond to questions either from the board or suggestions or from the public without giving the administration an opportunity to go and do their own research and make sure that what they give as a response is a reasoned and appropriate response, I think is, is putting that, them in a difficult position. And so the idea of asking the board chair to make that decision is, it's a hard role, but that's really the one caveat they have to hold on to. I don't want to ask for an answer or direct until I have all the information. And there was information that wasn't shared that I think changes people's public or private perceptions of what happened, and that's exactly what we want to prevent, right, in a public discussion. So it's more than appropriate to hear the public's input, and if it's an, on an item on the agenda, you'll have a chance to ask questions, but if it's an item that isn't on the agenda, I think we make note of it and say, well, we'll be back in touch, you know, principal will be in touch, superintendent will be in touch, I'll be in touch, but we're not going to respond to it right now, and that, we have to, we have to sort of adhere to that, I think. Or, or we open this forum up in a way that really people say the wrong things at the wrong moment, um, or, or speak off the top of their head and, and get it wrong, and we don't want that either. So, you know, regardless of what these are.
Know what we're talking about.
Correct, and there are other perspectives that weren't at the table for that agenda item, it wasn't an agenda item, that set of comments that they didn't know that it was gonna come up, for the same reason that Tracy rightly said, uh, listen, we can't talk about changing the calendar until we give people a heads up, because there might be people who have very different perspective who want to give us input, and, and that's why it needs to be on the agenda as opposed to me making an adjustment on the agenda, unless it's an emergency, right? And if it's an emergency, we gotta do what we gotta do, but both of those last month's topic and changing the calendar are not emergencies, right? And so we should go through a fully vetted public process.
I appreciate that, and just a couple of notes. One, first of all, my edits have no, like, actual functional changes to this, it's just for clarity.
Yeah.
And also.
Make it less busy.
These, uh, rules, just to be clear publicly, are from the main school board handbook, this is not the whim of the Lincolnville School. And also, just to, for my own sake, to clarify, uh, when things are emails, I understand that they're not gonna be on the agenda until the next opportunity to give people a chance.
If it's not been published, yeah.
It's helpful to say a public comment publicly, or I think it's helpful to say this is something that we will discuss or will be on the agenda next time, if somebody has emailed something that we are going to consider for the agenda.
I think we want to make sure we use the word consider, because just because we receive an email doesn't mean we're gonna have it on the agenda.
And that's what the school board handbook says, and that's what I wrote on my thing, it's like, up to the superintendent and the chair decide if it goes on the agenda, but if it is something you're considering, I think it's helpful to say it in public.
When that reply went back, was that, I didn't even look, he did let the.
I, I saw.
Oh, okay, all right, that they knew what was gonna be the same, okay.
Be a helpful thing, and according to the handbook, I think is allowed to say, this is a public, this is a email that we received, and it will be on the next agenda, if that's the case, or it won't be on the next agenda, or whatever, that you could say it in the public comment period, is my understanding of reading the handbook. I could be wrong about that, but I'm just putting that out there as how I read the, um, the public comment section of the handbook, that it said you could have.
So i- if, and I don't want to speak for Dawn, if Dawn wanted to read her email tonight during, had wanted to during the public comments, that would have been perfectly appropriate. Me receiving an email doesn't mean that I bring it up.
Okay, got it.
Is that what, maybe distinction will look?
That's the distinction, could somebody email the, you though, and say, I can't make the meeting? Can this be read during public comment? Is that allowed?
I think usually what I've ended up doing, because, not always, but I guess the majority of times, that if we get something, it's usually about something that's either going to be on the agenda or is like, coming up, and so I try to then say, we also received other input, input information during the agenda item itself rather than during public comment.
Totally.
But I guess if it doesn't end up as an agenda item.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I, and I think it is, from my reading, it's like at the discretion of you two as to like whether
It needs to be business of the.
Mentioned or not.
Yeah.
Yeah. But in any case, I think it's a great idea to have, both for our gain and the public's gain, so everybody feels invited to participate but in a way that is constructive, and also with the understanding that the school committee has very loaded, um, knowledge of the inner workings of the school and also, uh, power to do anything other than policy, so I think it's helpful.
Hey, back to the item, so do you want Kirsten to send it to all of us and we'll noodle it up and make some edits and come back with a different version?
What is everybody else, what do you guys? Is the general kind of feeling that it's too busy, is there too much on it, or do you like the idea of it, or do any other thoughts, feedback? Comments on this?
I don't think the brand, but it's a present that these two done this, this month.
No, 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 no.
Treat this as the first reading.
Yeah.
Look at the edits. Ideas in it, maybe come to conclusion next, next one.
Yeah. I was just seeing if there was anybody that had anything else now while we're together on thoughts or feedback or edits or anything like that.
I had one little thing, um, I just wondered, the public participation, it says to be able to address an individual, you know, all of the things that qualify some of the to speak, one of them is to be a parent of a current student. Wondered if that parent could be broader, like caregiver, guardian, something like that.
Very good catch. All right, so if anybody else has any thoughts, act, do you want to just be the repository of it all, and then?
I'll, uh, what I'll do is I'll, I'll kind of treat it like it was a public policy discussion, I'll give you the versions that came to me, and, and then you guys can look at them and make a decision.
Sounds good, so. Do I send it to Sean, and then? Then if anybody else has any thoughts or edits? Excellent. Next is update on special ed staffing and identification. You were up.
A lighter topic. So last year, I gave you an overview of special ed in Lincolnville, and this year I went a little deeper, so you can see that. So on the left side of this.
Social services continu- continuum?
Yes, it tells you, um, how many kids we've had in specialized, it's the smallest number at the bottom of each box, and how much time they're in the generalized classroom.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that the time there, is that the total for those two students or for each of the ones?
So the first box is the least restrictive of all, and it's a hundred percent in the classroom, so kids might, um, be on a five oh four plan, they might just have consultation services, that's not special education. As you go down, it becomes special education.
It, it is there for six and a half hours.
Yeah, so the bulk of our, our students are, um, eighty percent of the time or more in the generalized classroom, and they're serviced in the resource room. So this block right here, and what I did is I costed those services out. So at the elementary level, there's one teacher and two ed techs. What we did not include in here is benefits, it's just salary. Uh, so it shows you the salary, um, approximate number for those, and then for the one teacher and the two ed techs, um, going down, we have the intensive special needs group, and there's one teacher and three ed techs, and that's a larger number, um, it's less time in the general education classroom and more or specialized, um, differentiated instruction. And then in the darker box at the bottom, we have three students who, um, two are in a special purpose school, and I put the cost there. And I put the cost there that we pay out in tuition.
You can't see them on these handouts. Can you tell that?
So one is sixty two thousand and the other one is eighty three thousand three hundred. Approximate numbers. And then one student goes to another um, public school and that's approximately ninety thousand.
And that's just for the education itself, not transportation.
Correct. The next page. What I did is based this on the twenty four, twenty five school year and what money we paid out. And for speech and language, so these are related services. Um, for our portion for speech and language, it was just over forty one thousand. For physical therapy. Um, forty five hundred. Psychological um, impact, we hire a company to do that work. It was just over seven thousand. Is that testing?
Yes.
Yep. Uh. Our B C B A services was.
Does the B C B A stand for?
Um, behavioral consult, behavioral analysis.
Board certified behavioral analyst.
Thank you.
And then uh. Pay a lot out for specialized transportation. Over a hundred thousand dollars. For specialized.
Just to clarify, this second page is la- our last year's figures.
Yes.
And then first page for this year's figures. So um. Sorry that I'm having a little trouble kind of comparing them, but from your perspective, are they? Are we in a similar place from last year or not?
So the number of students are very similar to last year. Um, I think we're down to a three. Um, than last year, but the services. Uh, is it about related services?
Well, I'm just, I am trying to figure out what the. Report you're giving us is telling us, I guess, like what's this? I can see the figures, but what's the story? Like, does this seem like kind of on track and normal or is this higher? Is there, is there something that you're trying to tell us with this or it's just information?
Just information.
Okay.
Just information. The range of students we have in Lincolnville are very similar to last year. Um, they're across the spectrum. We have some very needy students. Some students who don't need as much service.
Is the extra, the stuff that was the last year's money that was spent out, is that on track, you know? Is that about the same as what we're?
Yes.
Spending last year?
Theoretically, we haven't hired the B H P and I'm down to specialized ed techs, so.
We'd be paying for it through substitute pay-ish? Cause you still have to have someone with the student, right?
We just don't have them filled.
Is that a legal issue at all? If people have a, kids have an I E P for not filling it?
No, not necessarily. It would be a legal issue if a kid's I E P called for a one to one or adult support across.
Right.
All, you know, sort of the venues in that, in school, then we'll require to supply human, but without that, no. It's just. Just makes the job harder for everybody who's there. Yeah. It's just that we, we do, we need them, you know, they're not all one to ones. The ones in the regular education are not one to ones. They go out to the classrooms and support kids, offering modifications and modifications on the work they get. The kids in the um, more intensive support programs, I'm sorry, Mary Kay.
No.
Right. Both of them, yeah. The intensive means that's closer to one to one or, or two on one sometimes. Two on one. Two adults to one kid sometimes. That was more.
Do we have any other unmet needs that we're not able to meet kids' needs? Outside of, I know you've been trying to hire for the B H P.
One to a, to a tech.
And that it's. Do we have any other? Unmet needs for our students at this point?
Yeah. I don't think I can speak to it, specific to this meeting, but um, yes. There's student with needs that we're having a very hard time meeting right now. Yeah, I can't speak too specifically to it in this meeting.
No, no, I know. I'm just trying to kind of figure out like, cause it's nice to know kind of like the population, but underlying it is then, well, does this? What we're looking at actually meet the needs of what we have in our building? Not necessarily about any specific student, but more of.
I think the budget is adequate if I could fill those roles.
Yeah.
And if I had, there's uh, a structural tool I don't have, yes, I could, but the money is not the issue at the moment. If that's what you're asking.
It's just the hiring piece of it.
Yeah. The money resource is not the issue per this budget. It's the human side that's having a hard time finding. Is that an answer?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So that from, there's, there's really nothing you're asking of the school committee at this point. Because we are, we've given the approval.
Yes. Yeah.
And I assume that there's discussion if Hope and Appleton could be helpful. Or it's, there's like no overlap of, uh, there's no sharing across.
Of, of adults, of, of employees?
Of, yeah, of employees, of like specialists and for these kids.
Some of our consultants are shared across the districts. Um.
They're part time.
We, you know, we have some other positions that have been part time in each. I, I allude to why that's a challenge in my board report. Because we don't pay the same in every district, so. It might be appealing if it were a full-time job in one district. But halftime in one district and halftime in another is not necessarily as appealing. Um, you know, it's, it's challenging, but by and large consultants in special ed. Don't work full-time in any one building, unless it was a really big district, so they're. They're traditionally spending a day or two in one building, a day or two in another building. They may work for. Districts outside of the hall district also, so. So that's pretty typical. Sharing a special ed ed tech is, would be a. Challenge. For a couple of reasons.
Yeah.
Pay, travel.
Yeah. And you're saying there's students we need that we can't meet if. You know, if it's like.
Other programs in other schools.
Right. It is. Can we, is, is this, if we can't meet that ever? Uh, do we transfer this? Like, what's the next step if we don't fill those positions or we can't? Meet those needs, like what, what happens?
That's a good question. I mean, generally, generally, if there was another um, sort of entity that could serve that kid. Better or more completely, then yeah, that's what we would look at. We would look, we'd look there. Kids need has to be met straight up. So where do we, where do we go to make that happen if it can't be here? Right? And there are a lot of things that can lead to that discussion, various reasons why, whether it's a special accommodation or like. Something very, very special that we need, or whether it's a behavioral issue that's sort of. Untenable given our environment, like those kinds of things would drive that discussion. Yeah. And then money, money's a, a big, a big thing, cause we budget based on what we anticipate we're going to be able to provide for a kid. And if things change, then we, we, we have to, we have to make adjustments. We have to scour, we have to. Squeeze, squeeze the budget to make it happen. But so, yeah. It's tricky.
And I think ultimately, though, I mean, is it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's still kind of the underlying, like having the. Child in their community, in their school is still kind of like the ultimate gold standard as much as possible, and keeping them.
And that's my personal philosophy, wherever possible, you serve that kid in the community they belong to.
The legal standard too.
Yeah. I think it's.
That's more what I was trying to, I was like, wasn't that?
Just, just effectively, that's, that's what we want to do whenever possible.
Anything else that you want to present?
That's nice.
Thank you very much for that, for that information. All right. Up next is an update from the Student Learning Committee.
Uh, yeah. Basically, we met, we meet monthly, so we uh, we met and. If you recall, the overall goal is to, to have pulse of how the school is doing, you know, the curriculum assessment. And kind of the, what we ultimately goal is to be able to speak to the strategic plan in the future. Um, the stage that we're in right now is kind of still doing our homework as a committee. And learning best practices um, and. Kind of forming the, the, an educated question to be asking um, so that we can. You know, be our, be our best selves, I'll just committee and ask, ask questions that are both appropriate and educated.
Excellent.
So we'll be meeting again this month. I have no real updates.
Other than your meeting, which is good, cause I think that was the last one. It was like, it was hard to even find time to meet before, so. All right. Excellent. Any questions from anybody or anything else? All right. Next is superintendent's report.
So my report's in the packet. I gave you an update on a couple of uh, programs that we're working on across all three uh, schools. Um, I'm very interested to see what comes out of our C STAG training, which is. A set of best practices for school teams to address emerging threats. So, and they can be, they can be anything from, you know, the bomb threat that came via email to a student making. A comment to another student and um, so the training is designed around a national protocol. To sort of help a team, ask the right questions, take the right steps and know. You know, how to interpret the, the information that they, they acquire at each point. So. When we've completed all of it, um, I will give the board an update on. What we took away as learnings. Uh, M T S S is my personal uh. The word I want to use, it's, it's, it's the area that I brought to the table this summer. Um, in part because I think it's the area that. Maybe helps us to begin to leverage uh, what is a really expensive part of education, which is special ed. And so uh, there is a, a slight twist to what. Uh, a multi-tiered system of supports asks schools to do in evaluating student needs. That is different from the model that has been present in main schools for the last twenty five years, which is response to intervention. Um, and so we're just beginning that work at the administrative team level, uh, wrapping our heads around. What does that mean in terms of the systems we have in place and how do we think about these a little more? Um, of potentially effectively. To reduce the number of kids that are making it to that third level of being identified for special ed. And um, and that's the ultimate goal of building a, a well-designed system is to. To reduce the number of students so that Mary Kay's report in five years has. Half as many students in, in programming as opposed to um, what we have, so. So anyway, that's going, ongoing. I gave you an update on some of the takeaways I've had in talking to. Uh, various players around the schools. One that I didn't include here, but that I uh. Came to me uh, the other day is. Um, I think in a year, if we really wanted to start to look at different structures. That could lead to lower costs and more efficiencies. We're gonna have to have a discussion at the union level of meeting more than twice a year. Because those structures and we, you know, I've thrown out a couple of ideas, you know, just off the top of my head. They require lots of agreements um, to build relationships across schools and so. One of the things that um, I hope to bring to a discussion at the union level is, we can't do that. One board at a time, because the agreements, if we're going to find efficiencies and share resources across districts and. Schools in different ways than we do currently, everybody's got to be around the table. You know, it just doesn't work for me to bring Lincolnville's perspective to Hope and Hope's perspective to. You know, Appleton, uh, you know, it's just a game of telephone. Um, and I'll just give you one example. I think the, the area that has the most possibility for us is. To partner with another district. And form an educational service center for special education, so that all of us don't have to have a special ed director. That in fact, we could have one director that's overseeing schools and, or you know, five or six different schools and. Districts like our own would hire maybe an assistant special ed director who would then. Provide some of the uh, day-to-day services. But that's not a conversation that can happen on a December meeting or a June meeting. That's a conversation that has to happen uh, over a, a series of meetings. And so I think the reality for, for those. Changes that might bring the biggest bang for our buck are going to require us being honest about like, hey, we can't do this. Sort of on a wing, you know, just winging it a couple of times a year that we're gonna have to. Once we have an idea we want to explore, we're gonna have to meet and really hash it out because there's winners and losers. And pros and cons for each one of you as individual towns, as well as if we started to reach out to some of the surrounding communities. Um, so I just, I'm just throwing these things out there as just observations. I don't have any solutions for anything. That I've noted here other than I see these as, as things that, that we need to explore a little bit. So. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is that going to be an agenda item for the December?
I don't know. We'll have to talk about that. Um, I, I'm gonna have that, this same conversation, but I don't have anything to put on the table for this winter yet. Right? So.
What about a proposal just to meet more?
We could consider that um, to, but I would want that meeting to have some meat to it too, right? You know, not just another chance to, to bring everybody to the table. Um. The idea I just threw out to you, I think is. Going to take longer than I hoped this summer when we first talked about it, because there's a, a big change in. One of the districts that I think we should partner with, um, and I don't think anything's gonna happen in that district until that change happens, right? Until they hire a new superintendent, so. You know, but I wouldn't be making those decisions if I was the outgoing superintendent.
Right.
And then we'll just have to make sure that we're still. Like although we might all be together at the same table for the joint committee. Some of the stuff, we still have to come back together as the Lincolnville committee to adopt it.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah. It'd be a lot of steps.
Joint committee really doesn't have a lot of deciding though, or unless it's.
No, you're right. They don't. Absolutely. It has to come back here, but.
At least then we're all having the discussion together.
Correct. And you know, there are, there are potentially different. Savings for each town and um, you know. Uh, an educational service center wouldn't work well if it was just Lincolnville. And um, you know, an outside partner, right? Because then we would still have to hire somebody for Hope and Appleton. But Hope may not save as much money as Lincolnville or maybe the cost for them doesn't change, you know, there are just. There are pros and cons that are way too complicated to just throw out there, but would have to be on the table. And we'd all have to be around the table going, yeah, I think it's worth it, right? We're not a winner in this circumstance, but the three towns as a whole are winners, right? And so I think, you know, and having gotten to know all three boards, you're all pretty sure. What's most important to you? And it, and I noted it early on here is you guys really. Uh, are, you're tied really closely to this community that you work for. But it's just as true in the others, right? And they're looking out for their needs just as much as you're looking out for this community. And so. It does require us to be around the table. If we were to move forward with a, a sub- some substantive change, right?
I mean, just a, a thought, I mean, one of the kind of low hanging fruit things on this, this list of. Um, helpful and not terribly surprising problems is the uh. Website for the um, central office.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe that's a place where we could start working together. That doesn't require a lot of um, conflict.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A lot of trade-offs.
Yeah, there's a lot of pros.
There are a lot of trade-offs, yeah.
Like getting in the rhythm of meeting more and discussing these things. Like getting in the rhythm of meeting more and discussing these things.
Yeah. But that'd be a great example of why I think we'd need to meet, because I think the ideal solution means each one of the other towns has to buy into the same platform. Right? We, we can't, we all can't try to merge three or four different platforms together. And so it might cost Hope more than they're spending right now to piggyback on what's in place, right? And so that's what I mean, because otherwise it doesn't, doesn't make it any easier if I've got three different platforms that we're running instead of what I'd like to see is one, right?
You're saying even in this, there's probably conflict.
I, well, I, but I, but it may be, it may be a good place to practice playing in the same sandbox, right? So.
Sounds good.
Since you, we mentioned, um, Brett, I'm just, it's a, would it be appropriate for me to ask you now what eventually laid out in my playlist?
Sure. Um, so I'll let Justin talk about the response here. I'll, I'll tell you how it came. Justin, the email went to about, I'll say eighty school districts. Justin was one of them, first one to notice it. Um, but all the other hall towns were on it. Camden Rockport was on it. Schools in Texas were on it. You know, schools all over the state here were on it. Um, so Justin alerted me. I made sure to alert um the other towns. Justin took the lead here with the sheriff's office. I took the lead in Knox County. Um, and then also began to reach out to the state to get their take on, on this relative severity of the threat. Um, the long and the short of it, it was, uh, was found to be not very credible pretty early on in the process. So we were pretty sure we didn't need to take extraordinary steps. Justin had the, the school searched. Uh, he was even able to find a dog, which I couldn't find for the other two schools, um, and had the dog.
I, I was like, you had like a dog hanging out somewhere in the school? Like, no, gotcha. Yep.
And then had and had a sheriff out front at the beginning of the day.
That's right.
So how did the parents react?
Um, I, I would say that we had a large number of students out that day. Um, top of my head, seventy-one, so around a little more than a third, I think. Um, it was also a Friday after a late night soccer game. So that's where I was when I got the emails of the championship soccer game. So I mean, it was a, it was a, it was a day that I think if given the opportunity, my parents would choose, yeah, I'll be my kid home today. Um, but I don't, I, I, so, but overall, I don't think there was a lot of hysteria. There were a few really very reasonable questions. Um, I think it's very helpful when you can tell parents how quickly we responded and what the law enforcement response was. So there's the Center for, um, oh gosh, what do they call it?
Strategic threats.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and they're, they're sort of Yeah, they kind of assess threats and kind of give you little bits of information about viability. And they were pretty quick to say like, this is a rendition of an older email that circulated several years ago, looks like it. I mean, um, and then to be able to say to parents, we had within a half an hour, we had a law enforcement officer here who went around the entire perimeter, the exterior of the building and the interior of the building um, with a custodian. And then shortly thereafter, we had a bomb setting dog to the, through the whole, whole grounds, like it doesn't get much quicker or better, more thorough and overall response than that, I think. So I think that showed people that it's pretty safe.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. No additional absences we can attribute to that after that one day.
And there weren't, uh, really wasn't any feedback that came to any one of the three schools.
None.
Of, you know, of, of serious nature. Just a noted thing, there's some good questions, so.
All right. Any other questions about superintendent's presentation? Or update, I should say. All right, next we'll move on to principal's report.
So um, I want to continue to just update you all on our school goals this year. So I listed them here. And I gave you a brief synopsis of some of the actions our leadership team is taking. It's a little more of a systematic approach to leadership, where you've got a structure now where the leadership team um, is helped deciding our bigger course. And uh, we're, we're using a subcommittee structure for um ironing out details, making plans and setting dates. And digging up resources. So we're sort of trying to harness the collective genius within the building, honestly. Um, rather than having a smaller group make all the decisions and try to have everybody have a stake in what we're trying to accomplish. So our overall school goal is that, you know, we're gonna increase awareness and our senior trauma informed practices. Through uh some trainings we're gonna provide. And we've got a number of individuals in the building now through our kid who are providing some of those trainings now that we have as a doctor and a um, in addition to our school counselor. Uh, then as a other, like sort of, they're not really sub-goals, but the other three goals we have are um aligned with Sean's goal around MTSS development. That's a longer term goal. So trauma awareness, there's, those two goals are connected there. Um, those are like, we're gonna try to get that, make some steps this year. MTSS, we'll take some steps, develop some protocols, a system. We're, we're gonna start doing that this year. That's a longer range sort of endeavor. You know, we may take smaller pieces of that. And then um, just organizationally, we're gonna establish a, a PD plan that the, that we have a committee that decides how we're gonna use most effectively of professional development time. So that includes our days that are, are dedicated to teacher, uh PD, our early release days, and then also our staffing, because I think staffing needs really needs to be a professional development. So they, they've done some work. Um, they sat in on the third, on the third, um, spent some time, we're gonna spend some time on the seventh. So we have pitched conferences coming up on Thursday. The next day is a PD day. And so we're gonna spend some time continuing that subcommittee. Uh, you, you guys already know about the staffing. Uh, we have two ed tech positions soon to be a third ed tech position that we're going to have to fill this week. We are desperate, we are in desperate need, because at this point, we are gonna have a har- a very hard time needing some IEP level uh needs. And that non-compliance, potential non-compliance makes me very worried. Um, and we're down one BHP. That's behavior health professional. My plan in the meantime is um, we've we've got some subs who sub consistently in the building that are willing to serve as sort of long-term subs in those ed tech roles. So I'm trying to snatch up as much time as I possibly can from those folks, just to be in those roles and sort of temporary ed techs. I don't know what else to do, to be honest.
Yeah, seems good.
What's that?
It's good.
Yeah, I don't really know what else. I mean, we're, we're having trouble with just duty coverage in the middle of the day. I think before we lose this additional ed tech, one has four different duties and everybody else has three, so.
Does recess duties have to be a staff person?
There should be at least one staff person. You mean volunteers?
Like community?
It's something we could consider. I mean, to be perfectly honest, it, 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 the kids are, I mean, not to a T, but pretty well behaved.
Yeah.
So I hesitate less in this school to say a parent volunteer could come in. Um, you know, previous districts, I wouldn't say. I'd say, no, no, definitely not. But here the kids make pretty good choices. We could consider some volunteers.
I'm more just there for the staff burnout of like, if they don't, they get a time to do anything because they're doing duty when they should be prepping or having lunch or whatever.
I mean, I take turns and Marie takes turns and, and we, everybody in the office, Reagan has like two duties throughout the day.
Which in my head then means taking you away from
That's exactly right.
Your day job.
That's exactly.
And so that's why I was like, if there's something else.
And me, me spending my time doing that is a very poor investment. That's a very poor
You're an expensive uh duty person.
Very expensive launch monitor. Um, so I don't, I don't like that.
I do think that's worth considering, like lunch duty, recess duty, whatever you would take volunteers for.
Yeah, I could put something out there for that. I, I think.
It's up to you. I more just was thinking like, that seems like a lower threshold than a commitment of being on a sub list or that kind of thing. You have a little bit more of a
If they were to do it consistently, they would need to get a former background check.
Yeah, 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 uh, which they should anyway. I mean, if you're here supervising children, you should have that regardless, but.
But if you could say get um, a pile of volunteers that had background checks and had a weekly duty or two that they were able to do, I mean, that would be amazing for freeing staff.
It sounds like you're interested.
I don't know that I could, but it could be very helpful.
Yes, yes. No, you're right. Actually, I appreciate the suggestion. It's a good one.
Yeah. How about that? Okay. Is that something that should be considered a budget time? Is that do you think a significant factor in finding people?
For ed techs? It's a good question, something we should probably explore. Um, what's so I think, I think our ed techs are hourly folks and, and this is, I don't, I don't, I don't know that this is a controversial thing or not. Um, I think they're fairly well paid by comparison to the other two districts now. But that is a difficult side-by-side comparison because of the nature, because of how raises have unfolded for hourly employees over time here. So if you're in a district with a contract, you can very easily compare someone who's on step four with someone else who's on step four in a different contract. In this, um, what's happened over time is that a, a raise percentage has been given, proved by the school board.
Across the board.
Across the board, three percent. And it's been applied to the person who has the highest hourly wage. So three percent, if it was twenty dollars, the highest paid hourly person, we take that three percent of the twenty, right? And apply whatever that number is to everyone else's hourly wage. So that person got three percent, but everybody else that got paid less actually got a percentage higher, three point one, three point two. But what that means is that everyone in an hourly is on their own arc. They all started in the same spot, but then they're on their own arc that is difficult to quantify and track consistently. I think we're, they're relatively well paid compared to the other two towns.
I think that a bunch of time, what we might have to look at though, is are substitutes now getting paid enough per day that approaches the same of what it would be to be an ed tech?
No, I don't think so. No.
Which is good. That was my only, like, in the back of my head is like, if you're increasing, yes, benefits. If they take out benefits, that would be another piece of it. But that's like, as you look at increasing someone who might be a long-term sub, that's just getting paid a hundred and seventy-five a day. And it starts to approach what it would be for an ed tech.
What's tricky is I wish I could ask the broader population, what is the barrier for you to do this work? And I can name what I think the barriers would be. I don't know if pay is, I'm certain one of them, but um, why?
It's also hard. I mean.
It's just a very, very hard job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there like um, mobility opportunity for an ed tech? Would, I, I'm, I still know so little about the inner workings of schools, but, and I'm trying, but the, do would you as an ed type work towards being a teacher or are they completely separate things? Are there opportunities to like move up other than just spending, giving more years?
You mean opportunities to make more money?
Yeah, opportunities to make more.
Career growth?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, it depends on, um, yes, uh, I think, I think that they'd still, to be a teacher, for instance, that's the really, that's the bigger jump, right? It's the bigger jump for money, but it's also the bigger jump in terms of uh other benefits. Because we'll cover a family for a teacher versus, you know, hourly, we just cover one single employee. But they'd have to do the education. So to support that, we would need to talk about, including in that wages and benefits document, like something like reimbursement for coursework.
Right.
That might support them. I don't know if that's the kind of thing that moves the needle.
Yeah, I don't know.
I really don't know. And I don't really know how to survey the broader, like, population of candidates, potential candidates.
And I don't know that we could afford, we're paying for college to, to, like, courses.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, the solution in another district I worked in was to move the benefits from single coverage to like eighty or ninety percent of full family. That moves the needle for people who might be, right? But that's a huge jump.
I think that would move the needle for sure. I think people would become very interested in that, but that is a really massive expansion.
Yeah.
So we can just keep it in mind for a budget season of is that something that would help us be able to feel that?
Yeah.
Um, facilities and maintenance. I gave you an overview of the last uh update I got, which was last Friday from uh John Barney. He's the project manager here. Um, so you can see we're really, really close. All we're missing are these, there's a special damper that was not originally included in the drawings, in like the specs. And they've, they've installed it and they've said, yeah, actually we need these. It won't cost anymore. But they're waiting for them to arrive. And I think they arrived today. They're uh gonna have a uh installer onsite tomorrow morning right away, first thing. So I'm hoping we're looking to fire up sometime this week. I'm hoping, because it's getting a little chilly in the building in the morning. We arrived and it was forty-eight in the library this morning. So we're getting to a place where it's a little a little mippy. Um, but I'm hopeful there. And honestly, I'm very impressed with this company and the pace they moved to get this done. Something.
Um, how about though? What happened with the water?
Uh, okay. Uh, I just, yeah, so actually with that and this, I will give you the facilities and maintenance committee we just met. Uh, we've been meeting before every single of these meetings. We were worried, we, we had some, the water came up round. We had a lot of turbidity in the water, like the, the, when you flush a toilet, it would come out that way. It's coming out of the sink, so. So we um inspected the tanks in the basement. We had a couple of alarms that go off on these big, a thousand plus gallon tanks we have in the basement. When they get low and alarm goes off, you can silence the alarm. You can shut off a pressure, you can, you can shut it off before the, the tanks so that they refill these giant tanks and that's what we pull from. And the tanks were not filling. So we've had this happen before. If we have a big rundown, someone forgets to turn off the stick it outside.
But the source was okay?
This, the source, we, we didn't know because I shut everything down and then tried to access it from the tap that comes directly from the pump. And I got nothing. I changed the filter, got nothing. So we were worried that it was either the pump, which is only five years old. Um, or the well was dry.
Right.
Um, so it turns out that all it is, 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 I, I think it's a pressure switch. There's a pressure switch in there that has a tube that is not very big and it got silty and clogged and never told the pump to turn on. So it stopped telling the pump to turn on. That's what I should say, not never. Um, so it's really simple. It's great. But because the tanks ran low, uh, we needed to get a uh, the water checked. Again, we were on a boil order in the kitchen. And we also need to make sure that uh what's, fire suppression systems were properly charged. So we couldn't open school until that was inspected. We passed the inspection. The open school under the boil order, then midway through the day, we found out our water quality was fine. And they filled. So water wells fine, pop's fine. That switch was got them. Yeah, yeah.
So completely unrelated to anything to do with our project. It just was happenstance that it happened at the time that all of this was gone with the install.
As far as I can tell you.
Okay.
And that's, that's all I got. Happy to take questions.
Did we end up getting financing figured out for?
Not yet. No, that's um.
That wasn't strong, not yet.
Working, it's been, sure, um. We did have the auditors in the office this month for the FY twenty-three audit here. Um, I am waiting for an answer when it should be done. I think it should be done before December. According to Tom, that's the piece they need for the banks who are uh involved in the leasing. In the meantime, um, I've been talking with Dave and uh the owner of the auditing firm about twisting arms as much as I can to get FY twenty-four done. Uh, I think that puts us in a better place with the, the leasing arrangements. Um, but more importantly, I think we could make budget decisions without twenty-five. Um, I think we have a good handle on what we've actually expended out of the FY twenty-five year, uh, but we need to know.
Twenty-four into twenty-five.
Yeah, so FY twenty-five would be uh twenty-four, twenty-five um, last year, essentially. And um, but we need to know where we're at, at the end of twenty-three. And um but we need to know where we're at at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four. And so otherwise, it, you know, again, we're gonna be, I don't know what level of confidence I'll have in saying, oh, this is what we have in on uh unassigned fund balances in terms of helping to offset costs. So we'll see. Uh Dave's excited that he's got a partner here who wants to put some pressure on the sperm. Um you know, I, they're not a big firm. They're, it's a family-run firm. The Appleton.
One other town? Oh, Appleton.
Yeah, no, Hope uses them too.
Okay.
Hope's in the same, well, Hope, they just finished FY twenty-three. Um the issue's no longer, like, they're not getting the right information from schools. The issue is, I think they're just backed up. And you know, we're on a, on a list. Um so anyway, we're trying to to leverage that a little bit. Um but I will say, Appleton is using a, a much bigger firm. We, we got our twenty-three audit in the summer. We yet just got our draft of the twenty-four and they promised twenty-five by the end of the spring. They caught up three audits in a year. Um and it's a difference quite, in my opinion. I'm not an auditor. It's a difference between one, a firm that knows how to handle school audits, which are very different from traditional business audits. And two, they're a bigger firm, they have forty people that work for them. Um so when there's a backlog, they I think they can leverage things in ways that uh the current firm that we're using doesn't, so. But I can't, I can't fix that.
They use, right?
Yeah, yeah. But the town is interested in doing whatever we can to to change this dynamic, at least in the long term. I don't know how, how much it's gonna change in the short term.
But the auditors currently have all of
Auditors have everything.
Twenty-three, twenty-three into twenty-four.
Yep.
And you've relayed this other Appleton dreamboat company to Dave.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So my understanding is the town has a two-year commitment to this firm. So but I also don't know, you know, what happens if we break it, you know? If, if we could get another firm to take us on, which is still a big F, right? There aren't that many firms that are doing schools. And um you know, we're not the only school that's a couple of years behind, but it's, it's been going on long enough that it seems like they're getting one done a year and we'll never catch up. It's somewhere along the line. They've got to get a couple done in a year for us to have a chance at getting on top of this situation, so.
I think it's critical, like, for a number of reasons we were talking about. These audits, the, the, the recency of the audit matters in terms of the length of the lease purchase agreement we can get and the rate you get. So we, we, you know, made decisions under certain auspices, and if those don't materialize, it's troubling, right? It's tough. We may have to revisit or something. But the other piece is the, the fund balance is just unknown. So budgeting or knowing what resources we have for a immersion incident is just unknown to us.
Well, it's also really testing the community's faith
Yes.
in what we're doing and what we're saying about our budgets.
Yeah, I mean, understandably, but
I'd like to know where we landed the last two years. I'd know indeed, you know? I'd like to know. I'd like to know if we built a fund balance. That's great. We could breathe a little bit about some of these bigger capital projects. Um that would be, that would be.
We have ballpark ideas. We just don't really know officially, because we have to have the audit in order for it to be released.
We don't have actionable information.
Right.
Not enough information for you all to make a decision.
Right, right. I just didn't want to make it seem like we're completely like
No.
la la la. I mean, we have a ballpark, but it's not anything official, because
We can't.
the auditor has to actually be the one to say, this is what you're right finally at, in order for it to be released to our fund.
So one of the tricky things, and an expert on the panel here, one of the tricky things for us in the business, I mean, it's easy enough to see what monies came in and to see what monies we spend and to know we're in the black or the red at the end of any given year without an audit. What's a little trickier is those revenues that come in. Some have specific tags on them about what they can be used for, some have no tags on them. You know, that's the unassigned balance in the end that we can actually use to offset taxes. Those decisions are not so easily made by a business manager in a school finance office. That needs to be confirmed by an auditor, that in fact, those federal funds, you can't move those into the unassigned fund balance, and that's the bulk of it. Or those funds that came in for food service, they are designated to a specific time that can never be used. And so, not that we couldn't figure out all those rules, but those I mean, that's why you pay a CPA, right? To make sure that you don't screw that piece up, right? Especially on the revenue side of what we have coming into the school. And so, yes, we can make some pretty good estimates about, right? You know, we didn't spend all of our FY twenty-five budget, you know, we had this much uh that, but how many of those funds really resided in revenue sources that we could then apply in a unassigned fund momentum? Or in a different revenue source is a much harder question to answer. And that's what the auditor in the end helps us figure out.
And the business office, I think, has been far better about timely invoicing.
Yeah.
Which is helpful.
So you have to go back two years and go, wait, what was that for? Yeah.
Because that's that lad piece too, where it's like, yeah, we know what's, it 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 could be income, but it's not yet, if it's not.
I mean, I, I'll be honest, the, the business office was not operating in what's with best practices two years ago.
Right.
And so even if I can look at their total expenditures and their, I don't know if they got accounted for correctly in the right line. You know, we just saw a mistake left over from the same source. You know, that we're trying to clean up in terms of, and that was just in last year's budget. Those issues by and large, tri- I'm sure tripled back through the last two.
Mm-hmm.
Those good news.
All right.
That's a good news for you.
Well, no.
I just want to be.
We, we didn't even have all the information with the auditors. Like, they wouldn't take it till it was complete, because we didn't have invoicing done, because we didn't have end-of-month reconciliation happening. Like, there definitely have been improvements where
Yeah.
the end of the month happens and we're actually closing out the books on the prior month to know, yes, this was invoiced, yes, this was accounted for.
Right.
That lingering, although grants are always kind of a
Yeah.
floaty, I feel like.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I think that's, I've seen huge gains compared to two or three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Of the lack of just knowing what was happening with the money.
Yeah.
That is not happening now. Like, I think there is much more confidence in what's happening with our finances and that we actually have a spreadsheet that's transparent, like with the notes to know what is going on. Um.
Yeah, no.
I definitely think that we are in a much greater place in terms of knowing what's going on with our money than it had been. It just stinks that compiled on top of that is, we have auditors that can't keep up with it now that we actually did get our stuff in order. They can't get it done.
We're working the problem.
About one thing, it's All right. Any other questions? On principals update or boiler plant renovation? All right, we will move on to second reading of our policies.
Okay, so I found a solution to the red not printing with, since we don't have a color printer. Um so anything that was red i- in a policy is language that would have been changed. Um and so I highlighted it for you. So then you can just flip through these and go, oh, okay, that's the only language. So this would be the second reading. If you uh approve any of these policies tonight, they'll be adopted as of tonight. Um and so, as we noted the last time, some of this work was just to combine the three separate policies that sit on our website into one, since they're essentially the same policy. And this would be one of them, the first one.
And we still mark on it that each school is individually adopting the wording
Because the union.
to the school.
Right, because the union doesn't exist in, in many ways legally, so. So anyway, uh I, I highlighted things for you, uh the ones on physical restraint and seclusion. If you really wanted to, to change the wording, uh it would, I would take it back to our lawyers. It's, they're not policies that are really subject to um personal decision-making. Uh they're written straight from the law. And so I would encourage you to think closely if you felt some of the language needed to be changed.
Anne, are you more a person at the policy? Is there anything else at, like, in discussions?
Um.
Regarding this?
There were um well, there was one thing that I wondered about that we did just had to do with seclusion.
Like on the incident reports or just when the kid goes into seclusion or?
Well, it was just some things you had to um, oh, it was, it's on the incident report. Be, that can be
Mm-hmm.
number three. What you need, originally, it's said to
Just do they have?
have this education plan, and we were gonna delete, does a student have, and just say the individual plan had to be included in this report. But then my question is, what if there isn't an identified student? And there is no plan?
Right, which is why I think originally it was expressed as a question.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, it was meant to be.
Meeting, we've decided to delete the question, and now I'm thinking we should.
I, I didn't delete the question. I changed it so it wasn't a question. I said, I think I changed it to the wording uh record whether the student has an IEP or a five oh four plan.
This still, you, I think, this one still has, just you struck out, it says individual education or five oh four, four plan for this.
Right, so it was gonna just be a checkbox.
Statement.
Yeah. So this form, as it would probably be put into practice, would be a series of checkboxes. Yes, no statements. Um this is, this is the information that has to be in the, in the form itself. This isn't the form.
Three um, I'm gonna do these one by one for
Can do it either way.
Thank you for all of your work. I would make a motion to approve second reading of policies A through B.
All right, so it will be to approve for adoption BG school policy, school committee policy, BGR school committee policy procedures, JKAA use of physical restraint and seclusion. JKAA dash R procedures on physical restraint and seclusion. I will say, if anybody feels like they need a one-off on it, I'm happy to do that, but I'm also happy to do them all at once if you're all in agreement to that. If anybody has a strong objection to one, we can take them one by one. All right, well, I think Kirsten made the motion, and Anne, were you the one that seconded? Yeah. All in favor of approving all four of the policies? All five in favor? All right, next, we will move on to items for next agenda. So we need to include on here the school calendar.
If you want it to be discussed, yeah.
I think it makes sense to, since we had said um just to discuss the pros and cons, because do we actually have to, if we change it?
If you ma- if you didn't make a change in December, it would be too late after that.
Because you don't meet again till January.
Because what they're proposing is to take the
No, I know. I'm saying more, do we have to vote on that change if it were to be changed?
Yes, you adopt the calendar. So you would have
There's changes in days, then we would have to have both.
So we can have a discussion and you can choose not to change it. You can choose to change it. You can choose to table it.
Okay.
You wanna have a discussion, though?
I think we should at least discuss it, yeah, yeah. And that way all right.
Anything else?
And then we got gifted talented presentation, school budget development timeline, student attendance report. I think, is there anything else? Just the normal, if anybody has any subcommittee readouts. We can put those on there as needed, if there's anything else, but all right. Sounds good. Next then, if someone wants to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss evaluation of an employee pursuant to MSRA four oh five six A. Jared seconds. All in favor of going into executive session? All five, and that is at seven twenty-seven.
Okay, um, I'm gonna shut the owl off. You just need to tell me what the um time you adjourned at.
Do you want to be here for?
It's up to you. It's, your policy doesn't say that I have to be. I do have to be at the next. So um